Good evening. This is the Design Review Board Special Session for September 22, 2021 at 5:30 PM. City of Bisbee, 76 Erie Street, Bisbee, Arizona, 85603. I call the meeting to order. I'm going to go through the roll call of the members. The Design Review Board, Peter Gaffer.
Present.
Steven Green.
I don't know why he's not on. I spoke to him earlier in the day and he said he was gonna be on.
He was on earlier.
He's here.
I see him. But he was on here.
He's on here right now?
Oh, he's on here now.
His mic's not working.
Okay, present. Okay. Evette Ponte. Got perfect. I see you. I don't hear you, but I see you. So, present.
Present.
Linda Santianis. Ben Lepley. Craig Davis. City Council Liaison. I see you, so I'm gonna count you as here. Joe Ward, Building Inspector. I see him as well. And Doug Taylor, City Planner. Good evening. Tonight, we're gonna start by an introduction. Doug Taylor was the new City of Bisbee Planner. Doug, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've spent my adult life as an architect, a city planner, and a director of community development. I just wanted to clarify that my position is to review the applications and to make a comment on them and an opinion based on what I interpret the guidelines or how I interpret the guidelines to read, the design guidelines, and past decisions that you've made that may play into it. I want you to know my opinion is strictly, it's a professional opinion, but it's strictly mine. I am not trying to influence a vote or weigh in on anything. I may even have a different personal opinion than I give you based on what I think the regulations are. And I also want to state that I'm available for any of you. I can meet with you one at a time. And that would be at your request, and I would love to do that anytime you would like to do that if we have something you'd wanna discuss. So, thank you.
Mr. Taylor, and welcome aboard. So I'll be some of the standard items that we The staff would like to inform all applicants, number one, that all applications to this RBE agenda will require a building permit or assigned permit. Number two, the Design Review Board approval does not necessarily reflect the views and policies of the State Historic Preservation Office, which controls decisions impacting tax status of designated contributing historic properties. Please review shipos' policies. If necessary, contact them directly before making any exterior changes to your property. The intent of the Design Review Board process is applied within the Bisbee Historic District is to, A, improve and encourage uses leading to the conservation and rehabilitation of building structures, sites, objects, and spaces within the historic district while allowing for vibrant, creative, and livable community. B, encourage harmonious growth and orderly development. C, assure that settings, design, and construction will correspond to and enhance the visual characteristics of the district. D, prevent construction alterations or remodeling from occurring in a manner that would be detrimental to the historical or visual characteristics of the district. I'm gonna make a call to the public. Residents of the City of Bisbee may speak at this time regarding Design Review Board topics that are not the agenda. Please note that the public may address the board regarding individual items on this agenda following the applicant's initial presentation of their agenda item. Speaking time limits will be observed during the call to the public. The speaking limit or time limit is three minutes per person. So we'll start with the old business. Agenda item number one, this was tabled for 30 days at the August 4 meeting. And obviously, we didn't have the last month's, or it was not successful, last month's meeting. So, Application 2164 Bisbee Residential Historic District, property located at 239 A Brewery Avenue, applicant Mr. James Tausch. This application is seeking approval for changes to design plan pursuant to Bisbee zoning code Article 3.5.2.8. The property owner is required to obtain approval from the DRB prior to any new construction. The 300-foot, excuse me, notification went out on August 18, 2021. Public comment. At the time of this agenda, or actually as of today, we have nine public comments that were received that were opposed, and two public comments received that were in favor. So. Public hearing. Application presentation. Representative will present the application. Yes?
Mr. Tausch let me know prior to the meeting that he was gonna be unable to attend. So I did tell him that his application would be tabled, and it would be brought back at the next meeting in October.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion for something that's tabled?
Yes, ma'am. If you can table it till the October, I wanna say it's the 6th.
Somebody wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion to table it until the next DRB regular meeting.
Anyone second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go with the second. Lot of paperwork today, so. Okay, new business. Agenda item.
We need to vote.
Yeah, you need to. Sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? I think we need one more vote, don't we, Nina?
I'm not voting on this one.
Ben can't vote on this one. He refused himself for it.
Okay, so.
It's just Steven Green here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm an aye.
Thank you. Ready, Nina?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. Okay, new business. Agenda item number two. Application 2168 Bisbee Commercial Historic District located at 29 Main Street. Applicant Rachel Brand, Representative Rachel Brand and Jennifer, I think it's blank. This application is seeking for approval of a sign for Jen's Angels. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code Article 7.5, the property owner is requested to obtain approval from the DRB prior to obtaining assigned permit for installation of commercial signage. Is the applicant available to? Oh, let's see, application representative. It doesn't say who's gonna be.
No, but can I say something, Linda?
Yes.
She let me know that she may not be able to join right at the beginning, so can we move this? Let's just, can we move it back some? She may be able to attend later on in the meeting. Unless she's here, but I don't see her.
Okay, is that something we have to vote on, or?
No, ma'am. We can just move it. You can change the order of anything on the agenda.
Okay, great. Agenda item number three. Application 2170 Bisbee Residential Historic District Non-Contingent, number 637, located at 223C Youngblood Hill. Applicant Mercedes Aguiyo, Representative Benjamin Harvey. This application is seeking approval for window replacement. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code Article 3.5.2.8, the property owner is required to obtain approval from the DRB prior to the change of any building exterior features. Application. Applicant representative will present their application to the board. So, do we have? Are we on Mr. Harvey?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My submittal document, my view has changed a little bit from that, Ashley, to an earlier version, which is more similar to the recommendations of the DRB liaison Doug Taylor, which do you all have Doug Taylor's recommendations?
Yes, I believe everybody has them. Nina, if anybody needs them read, can you do that? Or should I read it?
I can do that if you need me to.
Okay, is that right? Did you want me to read it, Mr. Harvey?
Well, the area of the, let's see. The recommendation, there's two paragraphs or three paragraphs. They should probably be read because this closely matches my original submittal.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read it from maybe not the way we're beginning, but earlier on. Okay, so Mr. Taylor writes, "I met on side with Mr. Harvey. The property consists of a 1914 original home and additional, or addition circa 1967. The 1967 addition, now over 50 years old, is now part of the integral fabric of the home and tells part of the story of the life of the building. The structure I'm contributing and has no visibility from the street, only from the stairs to the west. This proposal for window placement is attached." And I would imagine that everybody got that. So the recommendation is, it is the opinion of this office that in the original 1914 portion, the proposed replacement of the two one-over-one single hung windows and the single light fixed windows are strictly like replacements of existing windows. In the 1967 addition, the existing windows are linear sliders. Instead of the proposed new double hung windows in linear openings, I believe slider replacements at the same opening may be more in keeping with the era and more true of what the house has become. There is a large linear opening on the rear of the building, which appears to be original. No windows remain. To provide continuity with the adjoining addition and safe egress from the building, a slider is suggested here also. City of Bisbee Planner.
Right, so. Should I comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
Okay. Essentially, the existing windows are bare aluminum sliders, which is not what I would have. It would be other material. The the large living room window is presently, the opening is vacant. It appears that that was probably a picture window because a sister building nearby, which is dilapidated, has a similar pattern of windows. Picture windows in the front and double hung windows in the back of the house. The front faces a mountain view, and I believe a picture window in the living room would be appropriate. And I am strongly promoting the idea of the picture window because I think it is aesthetically appropriate and in balance with the various window sizes and types in this building. So I, I believe I'm in line with Doug Taylor's recommendations.
Okay. Now, I'm going to see if there's any public comments. And just remember that it's three minutes per person. Is anybody gonna speak on behalf or opposed? Okay. The board discussion will follow. So any board member that has any comments, go ahead and and give your comment. I don't know if Ben Lepley or Peter Gaffer got perfect.
No, I'm okay. I'm perfectly okay with it. Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask just a clarification question for myself? It looks like Doug Taylor's recommendation is that we are going back to the 1967, circa 1967 home for the replacement windows, which which are linear sliders, and that's what we're looking at approving. Is that correct?
That is for the 1967 section. It's a two-era building. And except that however, he is accepting the existing slider at the back of the 1914 miners' cabin for functionality and security. And it's a fire escape.
So there's two parts to this. One is the original building. The second one is the 1967 addition. And we're, we're looking at windows in both buildings. Is that correct?
Well, it's one building, two sections.
Yeah.
1967 is an addition.
Yes.
So. Yeah, we're looking at both both of these. The sliders are presently in the 1967, but they're bare aluminum. And there is one slider in the miners' cabin at the rear, which is also a slider. It seems appropriate, as Doug recommended, to maintain that for security and as an exit and for functionality and ventilation. It faces a a public utility wall. It's not really visible to anyone.
Mr. Lepley, do you have any comments?
Yes, thanks, Linda. This reminds me of an argument that I had actually made quite a while ago, I think over a year. There was a house that had a mid-century modern addition with a corner window condition where there was metal column and two picture windows coming together like this. I believe the addition was brick. I don't remember the address. But some of you might remember that. And in that case, to match, it was just a window replacement to match that I had said we should stay with mid-century modern. And there was some debate on that and whether we should do that or not. And right now, Doug Taylor is actually making the same argument I had made back then for that one. However, that conflicts with some previous decisions we've made about sliders in particular, especially aluminum ones, not being aesthetically pleasing for Bisbee because generally they would conflict with the older building stock. So I think on this one, I think there's really, architecturally speaking, there's a valid argument either way that you can go. And I am going to say that I'm fine with either either replacing them as indicated in the original submission, so replacing the aluminum sliders with double hung vinyls or replacing them with picture or but I would not be okay with replacing them with aluminum sliders. Sliders of any kind. But if the proportion remains the same, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lepley. I'm going to have to agree also with Mr. Lepley on one or the other. And the reason for that is gonna be because of the, something for Joe Ward. I don't think you can get out of these windows. They are vertical and they're only a five by two. If it's five feet wide, there is no way you can get out on a 12-inch. So I think, I think code's gonna definitely have a big impact on this. Mr. Who's here on? Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Can you exit out of an 18-inch spot?
What are you asking, Linda? I'm sorry.
Oh, on this, there's a page, four out of the 23, that has the comparison between existing windows and proposed windows. And the existing are sliders, and the proposed are either single or double hung. But the spaces are the height is only, that's what I'm guessing, the height's three feet? And the width is five feet. Is that correct, Mr. Harvey?
May I? Yes. My recommendation doesn't really reflect my present view. That's why I I'm deferring to Doug Taylor's recommendations. I, my original submittal actually was closer to Doug Taylor's present recommendations. So I'm not really advocating double hungs all over the house as my submittal shows. I'm advocating that the present windows, which are in the new era, the 1967 era, are sliders. And do the window size and the functionality and the historical existence of these windows, I'd like to just stay with them. Replace or repair whatever it takes to keep them and use vinyl for that purpose or non, something non-bare aluminum, you know. There is one reference in Doug's document about a slider in the 1914 cabin at the rear of the house, which faces a public utility easement wall. It's publicly invisible and it should remain as it is today, a slider for sake of security and exit and ventilation.
Does anybody else have any comments on the board? Mr. Green?
No, I agree with that, with the age of the addition, that sliders would probably be okay. And the applicant has already indicated that he's gonna remove the bare aluminum ones and replace them with vinyl. And I think that's acceptable.
Okay, I think, anybody else have any comments from the board?
Well, I I don't know what the windows look like. But the new replacement that's being proposed, I'm not actually quite sure what's being proposed. What they look like. I don't wanna be a stick in the mud.
Scott's gonna.
Should I? I just simply, I just simply have a question. Are we deviating from the original application that was placed with us? Are the windows that you originally applied for with the application, are they now changing?
Yes, the replacements are no longer double hung windows. They are leaving the windows as they are, which for the new section, the 67 section, it would be sliders and leaving them for the older era, 1914 era, leaving them as is, which would be single hung in the rear and a picture window on the front. And there was a, the previous owners did place a slider in the old cabin in the rear by the public easement, and I'd like to leave that as is also for security and functionality and ventilation.
Okay, just for the reason, and Ben, I don't think you're being a stick in the mud. It's just that I would like to, I don't have any problems with the sliders on the later addition of the home, provided they're not just silver aluminum. But I would like to, I would like to vote on an application that is more specific if you're going to change the materials called out in the first one.
You want me to resubmit?
I honestly, I honestly don't know what to do at this point personally because I'm new to this. So I guess what I'm asking is if we vote yes on the application as it is, it's not what we're voting to approve. Without it being rewritten.
I'm verbally modifying the present application.
Mr. Harvey, is the picture window that you wanna replace, is that with the Taffco windows, the 60-inch by 60-inch casement picture that you provided?
That's an example of what I would, I haven't decided on the exact, and I actually don't know 100% that it was a picture window, but I assume it was a picture window because the house across the way of the same era has picture windows facing the view. And it looks like a picture window was there. It's just a big vacant hole, five feet by four feet.
May I address Mr. Perfect?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Perfect, what I'm thinking is possibly you want to make a decision based on the shape and style of the windows. And you could then make that an administrative decision by myself as to material. I know what materials are acceptable. I know you would accept vinyl. But if you vote to accept sliders, then you know, I will make sure that it is a slider in that material. I think the most important part of any kind of window replacement is keeping the opening at the size and shape that it originally was, so you keep the integrity of the bones. Somebody could come along, you know, 50 years from now and put in really handcrafted wood windows if you wanted. But right now, I could, what I can do is I know what's been in the guidelines and what's been accepted before. We could do vinyl sliders or whatever is available that meets that requirement. If the shape and function of the window is approved, that way the applicant wouldn't have to wait another time, but you could have him reapply.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I appreciate that, but I think I might not have made myself clear. It's just that the size of the windows and the openings, I don't think there's a question in that in my mind. Now, the question in my mind is if this application is calling out for double hungs in certain areas, and now we're switching them to sliders, should we not see that application represent that?
May I say something? Scott, I think we can probably address this in a rather complicated motion. I'm not really, I'm not sure that I'm the one who's gonna actually make the motion because it's got so many odds and ends to it. But just to move this along, I mean, I'm sympathetic with what you're saying. I'm one of the people who hate to see changes during DRB meeting, and we have no idea what we're really voting on. I'm totally sympathetic with you. But I think in this particular case, I believe we can make a motion that would encompass the changes and satisfy the board's requirements as well as the applicant's requirements. I don't know if anyone wants to volunteer to make that motion.
But you know what I would like? I would like to hear Ben Lepley make the motion.
Okay.
Because of the windows and the different configurations. Ben, would you be willing to do that?
I had a question first. Linda, was your question answered by Joe Ward about fire exit in a satisfactory way?
No. No. I, I don't think he said anything, Joe.
Yes, I'd like to bring you guys' attention to, um, historic, this, the zoning code five point three point five F. Which states that any existing building structure or pattern there too from the Bisbee District, which does not meet the requirements, the district criteria. Shall be considered non-conforming except for repairs and maintenance. No non-conforming building or structure may be added to or altered in any way unless the proposed addition or alteration will bring the whole to a higher degree of conformity. With the design components of the district.
So, so the question I had, oh. I have you, Joe, was a code question because I would prefer to have. The entire building, you know, matched to the conforming or the, um. Contributing portion, which is my personal opinion. So the question I had for you was if the window opening is only thirty inches high. But five feet wide, you have a thirty inch width to be able to exit. If it's the other direction and they put two side by side. Then is eighteen inches in height, uh, code compliant? Because that may completely.
Are the, the.
That portion.
Are these, are these for bedrooms?
I think, are they bedrooms? I think some are. Mr. Harvey?
There's one. Well, one wall was removed, so the layout that I show in my submittal, I has, should. It, it shows a utility room and a bedroom and, um. The bedroom wall next to the living room has been removed, so now the living room is like a huge L. Uh, I don't know if that explains. So there's one bedroom in the middle of the house. Now, the utility room has become the bedroom.
What size window are you putting in your bedroom, Mr. Harvey?
Well, that is, um, five foot by two presently and we just. Keep it that.
Twelve inches isn't going to work, so that voids that one. So he has.
Twelve inches. It's two feet, two feet.
Yeah, Mr. Harvey, I'm, I'm on your side. What I'm trying to say is that if. If you only have a two-foot window and it's a single hung, then all you have is twelve inches to exit. I don't believe that's enough. So my question was to Joe.
It's a slider. It's, it's not a single hung, it's a slider.
Linda.
Oh, so that one was always a slider? Because what is comparing, comparing the actual application to the revised application? So which would have been the, um, the single or double hung ones? How tall were those?
Well, those.
Opening.
If you look at, if you look at the photos at the original windows, that's. Basically what would be the proposal, that we keep the original windows. And, um, the, the single hungs in the back of the house are three feet by five feet, the two single hungs.
Five feet wide and two feet tall?
Yeah, three feet wide, five feet tall.
Oh, it's the other way around. Okay, so you can exit.
So putting, so putting a slider in that opening would be, would be counterproductive, wouldn't it?
It would be making it the reverse. Yeah, that would be making it like a fifteen inch width or sixteen because it says thirty-two by sixty. So fifteen inches is extremely narrow to.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say, Mr. Harvey, that, did you say that you were converting a utility room into a bedroom?
Uh, could you repeat that? I'm, I'm not hearing it.
Yeah, I know that, I know the, the sound quality isn't what we would like. Are you converting? You're saying you're moving a bedroom from where it had been into a utility room. Was that, was that what I, what I heard you say?
There was a, a bedroom and a utility room in the back, which is in the, shows in the layout, I believe, and. The wall was removed between the bedroom and the living room.
So.
And that opened, that, yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, and now the two single hung windows in the back of the house now are part of the living room. In terms of windows and ventilation.
So is the window that is going to be in the current bedroom? Does it, is it, is it a newly created bedroom or is it an existing bedroom?
Oh, well. Could you repeat that again? There's this, I, I, if the frequencies are, uh. My, my ear is not picking them up, you know, and I don't, sorry.
Is that, is it the, the bedroom that you're going to be having in the home now? You took the other one and you said you turned it into part of the living room. So the, the bedroom, the proposed bedroom, is it? Is it a newly created bedroom? It wasn't an existing bedroom because if you're creating, then your windows are going to have to meet egress standard.
Right, that, that was, that's the existing bedroom that had the double hung windows in it. And we removed the wall from between it and the living room.
Yeah.
And it, it is now a living room space. And the bedroom is now what, what is called a utility room or office in the, uh, layout.
Okay, so therefore your new bedroom will have to have an E, a, a code, um, compliant egress window.
Okay.
If, I'm sorry, if the location is this nineteen fourteen utility room. Uh, the window is twenty-two by sixty, so, uh, code compliant would be a slider there. If it's sixteen, it's by the drawing, it looks like it's sixty wide by twenty-two inches high. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then that would have to be a slider per code. Mr. Taylor, is there any way we can, these can be split? Uh, because it's, it is confusing, it's.
Well.
Someone cannot be, um, single or double hung at all.
Based on the confusion here between my comments and the proposal before you. I would, uh, if I were on the board, I would ask that the applicant come back. I was trying to figure a way that I could do an administrative approval based on your approval of the windows. But I think what my, you know, I've got some experience doing this. I think this should be, uh, something. Tabled until he can come back with the proper, uh, proposal. And I think it'll be clear then. And I will help.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
When you table it, it's not going to be in time for the October meeting, so it'll have to be a tabled until the November meeting.
Okay, so, um, I guess the option would be what we're looking at are materials. So what we really want to see, the materials and then the configuration. Some of these cannot, we've already decided, I think amongst most of us that. Either would work, so I think at this point, it might be a good idea to let Mr. Taylor do an administrative approval. Because he's going to be working with Mr. Ward and Mr. Ward's going to be the say on this. And, uh, but the drawings really do need more clarification, uh, because if it's not a utility room anymore, then. Maybe you can show the new configuration and, uh. I don't know, does anybody else have an opinion on that? Do we table it or do we move it forward?
If I may just throw in that the window that Mr. Ward was talking.
Oh, we can't hear you. Uh, Mr. Taylor? Can anybody else hear him?
No.
No, no.
Your voice is off, uh, Mr. Taylor.
I'm sorry, didn't, was I not on mic?
You are now.
Okay, the window that is in the proposed bedroom that was the question that Mr. Ward had. Would be an egress window and it would meet code.
Correct.
And that's the window and, and even the window in Mr. Harvey's proposal, I believe, unless he had double hung in there.
The only. By twenty-two.
Linda?
Yes?
I would say if it, I agree with you in, in the, the board. Board would consider this, rather than hold him up until November, your agreement, the sliders are okay. Let Mr. Taylor do an administrative approval on the materials. It, it's clear to me that the, where the, where the sliders go is in the new, the new part of the building and one is going to remain in the, so it's, it's pretty. Pretty straightforward, I really think. I, I, so I would suggest you do that, so you don't hold this gentleman up. Up for two months.
Ben, would you like to do that motion?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so we're doing the administrative.
Correct, on the, um, on the materials and then, um, since we've already. I mean, you can use either or double hung or the sliders. Um, I guess the second proposal is fine as long as it all meets, uh, with Joe Ward's approval. We call compliance based on which rooms are being changed. But I'll try to articulate that. Is there any way, Nina, we can do an exception so that he can come back in two weeks?
Um, I'd have to call for a special meeting again. Or are you talking about for the sixth?
The actual, correct, on the sixth. Can we add it to the sixth?
Well, everybody else had the deadline as of today, so I mean, I don't, that would be up to the board if you let him have that extension. To be on the sixth, that I'd need the, um, all of the information by Monday, if you let him have that extension. But the motion could be made that it, that Ben makes is that he, um. That you, uh, hold on. That you accept the recommendations that the city planner gave with. The following exception, materials will be given administrative approval as long as they meet code with Joe Ward. You can do that or you can, or you can make him come back on the sixth, but I'd need the information by the twenty, or by Monday.
So I would re, I would resubmit, uh, by Monday.
Well. If we decide that. Yeah, if you, they decide that, yes, sir, and I have your application, we just would need the new. Information for the windows and.
Right.
Layout.
Right, I, I got it. That's fine.
I'll make the motion. I'll do a motion on application twenty-one seventy. Uh, Bisbee Residential District, non-contributing number six-three-seven located at two-two C Young Hill, Young Blood Hill. And the. Motion I'm making is to accept the recommendations of the city of Bisbee planner. With the exception of submitting materials, uh, for administrative approval as long as they meet. Code compliance approved by Mr. Joe Ward.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any yes, all yes?
Hi.
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 Any nays? Or, yeah, nays. Okay, motion passes. Am I good to go to the next one, Nina?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harvey, did you understand that your application was approved? The way they did it and you can have administrative approval for the materials that you use for the window as long as they're code compliant?
I hear that. Um, I'm under the impression that this is, um. Pretty much in line with the recommendations of the liaison.
Yes. It's.
Okay, so I'm for it, yeah.
Okay, so your application, just, uh, make sure you get with Mr. Taylor for the materials and then Mr. Taylor will get with Joe about the, make sure it's, uh, done with code.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, could you, um, do application or item number two, just to see if she's attending yet? And then if not, we'll move on to four and then put her later.
Okay. Agenda item number two, application twenty-one sixty-eight Bisbee Commercial Historic District located at twenty-nine Main Street. Applicant Rachel Brand, representative Rachel Brand and Jennifer King-Locke. This application is seeking approval of a sign for Jen's Angels. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code article seven point five, the property owner is requested to obtain approval from the DRB prior to obtaining a sign permit. For installation of commercial signage. Application applicant representative will present their application to the board. See there, Jen, are you available?
I guess we'll just move on to four. On to Mr., uh. Bonnaker and then we'll go back again, maybe we'll do a couple more and then try again. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, agenda item number four. Application twenty-one seventy-one Bisbee Residential Historic District, property located at eight oh two C Tombstone Canyon. Applicant, applicant William Bonnaker. This application is seeking approval for new construction of a thirty-foot by seventeen-foot wood frame accessory structure. Four foot by thirty-foot wood deck to be on the hillside of Pace Avenue at rear of Carson. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code article three point five point two point A, the property owner is required to obtain approval from the DRB prior to any new construction. The three hundred foot notice was sent out on August eighteenth of twenty-twenty-one. No public comments were submitted at this time. Is that correct, Nina?
That is correct.
Okay, public hearing, application presentation. So, Mr. Bonnaker?
Uh, yes, I'm proposing, uh, accessory dwelling, uh, on Pace Avenue, uh. On the rear of my, uh, property, uh. Wood frame, uh, building will be, uh, thirty by seventeen with a, uh, four by thirty deck on the front. The hillside slope is approximately, uh, six foot of slope in seventeen feet. Uh, the building will have, uh. Eight-inch, uh, hardybacker siding. Uh, the windows will be, uh, Millgard wood aluminum clad windows. Uh, metal roofing, uh, light green and color. Uh, that's, uh, about it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think I want to read the, um. Recommendation from the city of Bisbee planner. And I don't know, I would imagine you received this, Mr. Bonnaker?
No, I didn't.
No, I don't believe I got, I don't, I didn't get that sent out. I apologize.
That's, that's fine. So basically it, it, it describes what we already read on Tombstone Canyon. Um, and the property is identified as APN one oh three sixty one 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 K. Proportion massing and details are in keeping with other residential buildings in historic Bisbee Historic District. Proposed cladding, roofing and fenestration materials are in keeping with those previously approved in the Bisbee Historic District by the designer board. That was from Mr. Doug Taylor. So now I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion.
Linda, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing, so you have to declare the.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I missed it.
Sure, there's no comments.
Okay, declare the public meeting open and receive public comments at this time. Remember, three minutes per person. Anyone approving or disapproving? Of Mr. Bonnaker's application? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. No additional comments will be made once the public hearing is closed. Now I can, for board members to discuss.
Was there any, uh, letters or emails that came in? I thought every.
Was there any letters or emails that came in? I thought I remember seeing one.
No, there email that came in, but it was just asking for clarification on the wood-framed accessory structure. It wasn't an opposed or a support. It just was having a question about the structure itself.
What page of the PDF is this on? Because I'm not finding any visual representation of this. At least I'm not. I can't find it.
And 74, 75. Details 71, 72.
Might have the wrong, an older PDF or something.
Yeah, there's a
Ben, I said
front elevation.
Yeah, I sent a new one out right before like probably about 3:30 or so. You might want to look in your emails.
There's a good front elevation on 71 and side elevation on 72. Rear elevation 73, site plan. Does it help?
Okay, I'll re-downloading, but go ahead. Don't wait for me.
There you go. Ben, there is the front elevation picture on the screen that I'm sharing.
Got it. Thanks.
And then there's the side elevation that I'm sharing.
So any comments from any board member?
My first comment is not going to be a very popular one in the public. And that is that it looks a lot like the proposal, Dan Tausch's proposal, actually. Single pitch, clear story windows with horizontal wood siding. Porch elevated. Saying that, I don't really object to the design though. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, I'm in agreement with that as well. I think Mr. Tausch has looked more modern just because it was so much darker, the representation.
Yeah, I think the the proportion of fenestration on this one is way smaller than it is on the other applicants. And I don't think we should compete by comparing the two. I took a look at the site and it sort of tucks in there nicely. It's not anyone's way. I think it's a I think it's great design. I certainly support it.
And it's it's very difficult to see from from the street level.
Anyway.
But Peter, we can't hear you.
Now, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, I would say I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Very good. I have nothing else to add.
Linda's connection actually might be, she seems frozen in the ether.
Yeah, it does seem like she is frozen.
Okay.
Well, we'll wait patiently. I think Peter, she cut off right in the middle of where where you were, so.
I'm ready to make a motion if anybody, unless anybody else wants to make more comments. But I guess we need a chair for that.
Okay, I don't know what happened there, but I couldn't hear anybody.
All right.
Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay. Mr. Gafford, I think you were saying that it it looked
It looks good. I'm prepared to make a motion to approve unless there are other comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Gafford.
I'll make a motion to approve application. I've lost my place.
2171.
Thank you. Page three, 2171 as presented. Favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Green, are you in favor?
Yes, aye.
All right. You need to call for those opposed, Linda.
Okay, I am so sorry.
Yeah, we're all ayes, but you need to see if there's any nays.
So there aren't any. I thought I called it and there were no
Well, maybe I cut out. I'm sorry.
No, you must cut out because it was any kind of opposed or in support.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm talking about for the motion that was just made. You did all ayes. So I I'll see if there's any nays.
Are there any nays? Thank you. None, I guess motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number five. Application 2172 Bisbee Residential Historic District, non-contributing property located at 142 Brewery Avenue. Applicant Tamara Thomas. This application is seeking for retroactive approval of existing fence. This fence is at 142 Brewery Avenue. Was put up by the previous owner of the home without design review of board approval. Ms. Thomas will own the property as of September 1st and is requesting to have retroactive approval for the existing fence. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code article 3.5.2. A, the property owner is required to obtain approval from the DRB prior to the change of any building exterior feature. Application applicant representative will represent their application to the board. Ms. Thomas, are you available?
Yes.
There you go. Go ahead and do your presentation.
I I purchased the house not under, having no knowledge of the situation where the fence was not run through you folks ahead of building. Apparently, the fellow that owned the place before me perhaps did a number of those things. I'm not really sure. At any rate, the fence is extremely well-built. In the builders of the fence I'm in contact with and they have cemented the posts into the existing concrete wall, the retaining, it's not really retaining wall, but it's sort of because it's right on brewery. But this small retaining wall, they've repaired the concrete. It's a beautifully built fence. It would be a travesty to remove it because it would cause more damage to remove it than to leave it. The wood needs finishing of some sort. I have not done anything with it yet in waiting for you folks and your approval. It could be painted, it could be varnished. My personal preference is what the builders of the fence recommended. And he actually takes a small blowtorch, torches the wood and it immediately ages it and seals it and it looks kind of automatically older. The fence design, I've gone around to the immediate neighbors and asked their opinion. They're all, they all think it's a great improvement over whatever was there. I don't know what was there, but apparently it was rather ramshackle. So I'm just asking for me not to have to remove it. I will paint it or finish it as as the board decides if they have a preference. And I won't be doing anything further without your approval because now I know you exist. I am a full-time resident. I have moved in and am thrilled to be here. It's a it's a town I've wanted to live in for 40 years and finally be I'm able to bring my work with me and I work from home now, so I'm here full-time. And I hope for your approval. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, and welcome to Bisbee.
Thank you.
Open it to public comment and remember, three minutes per person. Are there any opposed? Are there any comments in favor? So I will, this will conclude the the public comments. Now, there is a recommendation on this one from Mr. Taylor. I'll go ahead and quickly read this one. Let's see. And this way, it's a non-contributing structure. The fence should be replaced with a more historically appropriate design. Extenuating circumstances are that the previous owner installed a non-conforming fence and had not remedy the situation before new owner took ownership. It is my request under the recommendation that the owner choose either a wood picket fence or round top wired fence as illustrated on pages 26 and 27 of the Historic District guidelines or design guidelines. I don't know. Nina, if you can pull those up or if Ms. Thomas already knows what
It would be a great expense for me to remove the existing fence. It's and and damage the wall.
I'll go ahead and finish reading this, Ms. Thomas, and then we'll open it up for discussion amongst the board. To be no higher than 48 inches above the front yard, to be allowed to be incrementally installed with the dates for completion of March 16th, 2021. And that the DRB allow this office to handle the owner's choice as an administrative approval. So now I'm going to open it up for comment, but I'm I'm actually going to start on the comments on this one. After looking at this, what I'm thinking might be a viable solution is leave the fence as it is. But if you go ahead and add some vertical picketing, picket fence type material, there's several solutions on the design review guidelines. And I think that would meet compliance. But that's just my opinion, so I'll open it up to anyone else on the board.
Yeah, I would go along with what you said. I think the 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 posts can remain. And maybe just put pickets between the existing posts, which would save having to damage the concrete structure and just incrementally replace the horizontal bars with with pickets. And as you say, do that as an administrative change.
Or my idea was more catch the verticals to the existing horizontal, so you're not removing anything, you're just adding to it.
You'd need to have something there to Yeah, it would structurally, it would need some support.
Right, but they're they're all wood planks. It looks like structurally. I mean, you would
Okay, I'd go with that. I'd go with that, Linda.
Thank you.
Yeah, Stephen Green, just coming in here. I had a look, I had a look, yes, I had a look at this today myself. And I think the simplest solution is to add pickets to the front of the horizontal structure that's there. Then the visual appearance is perfectly compliant. And what's there seems to be quite well-done and sturdy, so it will take the weight of the pickets. And then it, you know, nobody's going to drive by and go, oh, look at that contemporary fence. It'll look like a traditional picket fence.
Mr. Perfect, do you have any comments?
I I would just like to say that I concur with everybody that has spoken so far that if the if the existing fence can stay as it is and just pickets added to it, I think that's probably the easiest and quickest solution.
Oh, that I I'm not opposed to that at all. And in fact, I'm very, I think that would be great. If I could have some Sorry, I've got a call coming in that isn't for me. If I could have perhaps not immediately, but at some point, some guidance as to how far apart they need to be, you know, what, you know, what what you want it to look like so that I make sure I do it the way the board will approve. I'm more than happy to add vertical pickets to the existing fence.
Mr. Taylor. Oh, sorry.
If it's okay, you can come and meet with me.
Yes. You and Mr. Ward. Mr. Taylor? Well, I'll let you say it, Mr. Taylor.
If it's okay with the board, I would I would like you to come and we can talk about what you can put in that spot. Can't hear it. I don't know what to do. I can hear you.
We can hear you. We can hear you. Did you be able to hear? Oh, no, she's, you're on mute. You're on mute?
No, she's not on mute. She just may have lost sound like
Okay, I'm back. Okay, there you go. I just couldn't hear Mr. Taylor.
What I was saying was if it's approved by the board, I I could meet with you and we could talk about how you want to put that together.
Lovely. That's great. Does anybody else have any comments from anybody else on the board? Ben?
I don't think my view is a popular one. I actually agree with Tamara's first comment of just doing the Japanese burn technique on the wood and that's it. My view is that if you build something new and it is within the times that it is built, that is an acceptable acceptable option in addition to allowing people the freedom to practice their artistic sensibilities that they have. So that's my point of view. I know probably many people in that part of the neighborhood would not agree with that. But as an architect, being able to practice what's current, I think is important. Case in point, the convention center is streamlined modern, so. And that was built in its time when that was popular.
Mr. Green, did you want to do, I mean, are we going to continue to discuss this or are we ready for motion? I don't want to cut off anyone. Mr. Green, would you like to make a motion on this one?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve agenda and item number five, 21-72. As long as the existing fence has wooden pickets added to the front to make its appearance in compliance with the historic guidelines. And that can be administratively approved in retrospect.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Ayes?
Now we need a second.
Oh, second, sorry.
I'll second it.
I'll I'll get this, hopefully. I know Nina's cracking up, but I was like, I'm trying. All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Mr. Rappi? Ayes, nays? You're muted.
Sorry, I was muted. I voted aye.
Okay. It seems like everybody voted aye, so motion passes. Am I supposed to say that or are you supposed to say that, Nina?
No, you say motion passes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, item number six. Application 2173 Bisbee Residential Historic District, contributing property 404 Application twenty-one seventy-three, Bisbee Residential Historic District Contributing Property four oh four, located at six twenty Tombstone Canyon. Applicants JP Calog and AV Riley. The application is seeking approval for the following. Roof shingles have reached service life. Would like to install metal corrugated roof panels and three new windows in the rear of the property approximately forty-eight inches by twenty-four inches.
Linda, I'm sorry, I left the roof on there, but it shouldn't have been. Joe administratively approved that after what happened at the last meeting when we we didn't have a quorum and the sound was all wonky, so it's just for the three windows.
Okay, thanks, Nina. So approval for the three windows in the rear of the property approximately forty-eight inches by twenty-four inches. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code article three point five point two point A, the property owner is required to obtain approval from the DRB prior to the change of any building's exterior feature. Application applicant representative will represent their application to the board is either JP Callog or AV Riley.
Yes, I'm here, this is JP Callog, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Should I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip the the roof part, I have a prepared statement for them, I'm just gonna cut that out. I'm assuming that that one's good to go, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, board members, my name is JP Callog, and I am the homeowner of six twenty Tombstone Canyon Road. Before starting, I would like to thank every member of the board and staff for attending the meeting tonight to consider my request to replace three windows in the kitchen area of my home. I completed my planning after careful review of the design guidelines for the Bisbee Historic District. My intention is to integrate architectural elements of the surrounding community into replacement of windows with minimal, if any, degradation to the exterior of the home, i.e. making the windows substantially larger. Such actions could lead to irreplaceable damage to materials that can no longer be purchased, such as teardrop siding. I've considered the the fundamental steps of residential rehabilitation found on page fifteen, which are repair, restore, and replace. I'm requesting replacement for the reasons due to the unique characteristics of my home. Whereas, number one, the home was built itself on around nineteen oh five, and the kitchen was added sometime in the fifties or the sixties. Two, all three windows are different. There's two awning and one single pane opening. There's a an image of the kitchen, and which you'll see from the left to the right on that image, is that that awning on the left is is classified in on page nineteen as a non-acceptable awning style. And then you have an aluminum slider in the center. And then to the right, you have a single a single pane non-opening window. There's no continuity, they're all different, so I I want to make them all the same. The location of the project is in a place that is not publicly viewable. However, I do understand the necessity for today's review. I provided several window proposals that incorporate the design principles or virtually similar aesthetics to examples provided to the community on page nineteen. Through the design process, I paid particular attention toward the following citations. Quote, there are two main issues to be considered respecting the original features of the building and how to best relate the changes to existing neighborhood styles, page seven. Second, the old versus new argument provided on page eleven, whereas some argue old, some argue new. And quote, both extremes are to be avoided, end quote. Three, what is required is the thoughtful integration of old ideas with the needs of the present generation. And that's again a citation right out of the the guidelines. And then four, quote, instead of copying a historic design verbatim, new constructions should borrow ideas of style, proportion, scale, height, materials, et cetera, from adjacent buildings and seek out an honest contemporary solution to visit to the design problem. And that's on page eleven. Conclusive conclusively, a reasonable balance between the existing neighborhood styles and the replacement of my existing awning type windows can be achieved through incorporating similar design composition as found on page nineteen and in the and in the surrounding community without unnecessary degradation to the exterior of the home. In reference to my submission on the Anderson windows, you may also find the linear and horizontal dissection of the outer perimeter of the pane is a common style window. What I'm referring to is the example provided in your packet, which I understand is is the wooden casement with a divider. That's just an example that I'm looking at the pane, that's the the style that I'm replicating on one of the examples. With respect to the window type classification, and the reason why I classify or emphasize the word type is because awning is not acceptable, but today today's awning windows are much different. One second here, sorry. Okay, so with respect to the window type classification as awning, today's hybrid awning type windows eliminate the singular vertical and horizontal partitions. And what I mean by that is what I propose do not have this, they do not have that. Which are not, which are seen on the not recommended classifications, which on the bottom of that page nineteen. So regardless of the window types, I perceive all three designs as a viable solution to guidelines citations provided in my statements. Lastly, I would like to add a remark about the casement style window, which you don't see in there. In this submission, I would like the awning style and the casement style window to be considered the same. The reason I'm saying that is because the dimensions on two of the windows are are awning dimensions, where the width is greater than the height. And on the third window, the height is greater than the width, so that would be more appropriate for the casement style window. The main difference between the two is that the casement style is hinged left to right, where it'll go a few inches like this. And then the the awning window goes in and out. So in the end, I'm trying to make everything consistent, there's three proposals, I'm asking that all three are approved. And then I'm gonna stick with one type of window and one design of window, whether it be, you know, one of the three. Thank you again for your time, your time considerations and contributions to our community. This concludes my statement, adding any more questions.
Okay, on this one, we have a recommendation as well from the from Doug Taylor, City of Bisbee Planner, and okay, the replacement of existing windows should match the period, style, material, and context of the architecture as illustrated on page nineteen of the design guidelines. The house, according to the applicant, was built in nineteen ten and occupies a prominent position on Tombstone Canyon. The existing trim appears to be one by six and should be matched on the replacement windows. This house has existing one over one light double hung and single light casements. Recommendation, opinion of this office that a single light casement and two single light double casements, a simpler version of the casement shown on page nineteen of the design guidelines should be used to replace the three subject windows. That, I'm gonna open it up to the board for comments. Oh, no, actually, the public, is there any? Are there any public comments? Any for or opposed to these designs? Okay, I'm closing the public comments. Okay, now the board. Yes, go ahead, Mister Lovely.
Yeah, John Paul, you should turn the DRB.
I'll be there.
Good presentation.
Full time here, thank you.
I I think what's proposed, doing all three at once and then letting him choose eventually what he wants to do at a later time. It's definitely something that I've done before. And I'd support moving on three.
Thank you.
Any other board members want to speak?
I would just like to say that I approve the way that we're moving forward on this as well. And I do want to thank JP for being so concise and having such a great presentation, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I get clarification. Are the muttons on those windows embedded inside two layers of glass, or are they exposed muttons with true divided light?
I don't know the answer, but I have to to look at the examples provided.
They, I I please don't take this the wrong way, but the three examples shown look like Home Depot windows.
No, 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 these are these are Anderson windows. These are all Anderson, and they're not.
A a pride to the front and back of the glazing, I suppose. The muttons are the little dividers.
Yeah, I I can't, you know, I was not prepared for that type of question on this, I I pick Anderson because it's a.
It it just, that's important to me because you have a single light windows on the 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 front side of the building. That's the only side we've seen in these photos, and I that I didn't tromp around in your yard to look, but I went by and looked. It's a beautiful house, it's in a, in a, you know, it's a contributing building to the historic district. And I just think the muttons, the muttons in the windows are unnecessary. I would and I'm trying to work with you here, but I would think if you had those off, it would be a less expensive window, and you would have a single light window that would match what apparently is already in the rest of the house. I think this looks going for a a mutton divided, you know, a divided light window in a single light house is kind of gilding the lily, and I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to offend you, I'm just trying to clarify that it, why I think they're having muttons is too much.
Okay, is that something I should respond to, or?
I, yeah, I don't know how the chair wants to handle it.
Go ahead and respond.
So so as I had said before, you know, I'm gonna paraphrase my the the citations that I've made. I do believe it's consistent with the community, and I do believe it's consistent with page nineteen right here, as far as design elements are are done. As far as the type of mutton, I can only assume, I can't guarantee, but I can only assume that it it's built into the window, and the reason why is because that A series awning, that darker one, that's a complete wooden window, that's a custom window, that thing's like fifteen hundred bucks for a small one. And I do agree with you on that, I I could do it a little bit cheaper by by eliminating some of the design elements. However, that's something that I put in the plan for a reason. Because I want to to incorporate the design of my surrounding neighbors, and I want it to look nice. That's my perception or my perspective of it, and I do respect your opinion, your thoughts on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Lovely?
Yeah, I actually maybe I jumped the gun. Doug Taylor was made a very good point about having the muttons to be a front back, because I think we've all seen the ones where the muttons are hidden in between the glass, and you can't even see them half the time because of reflections, and they look kind of cheap. So as an astute point that I normally catch with this time, persuaded by the good presentations.
And I have to agree, if there's gonna be muttons, they should be, you know, for period versus like what Ben was saying, those in case like in double glass. They've they always fail, at some point, there'll be bugs in there, there, I mean, there's odd things, and then others start yellowing, or I'm sure that they're, they get better and better every year with products, but but I have to agree with both of them on that. Anybody else, Mister Gaff? You're muted.
No, I have nothing to add, I I I'm sympathetic with the the mutton argument, and yeah, it is a simpler and a lot less expensive to eliminate them entirely. But if the applicant is prepared to do the right thing, which apparently were fifteen hundred dollar window, I'm pretty sure it's the right thing, then I'd be happy to approve what he's what he's asking for.
Oh, sorry.
May I add to the statement?
Yeah.
If if the board will approve the, you know, a fourth design without me having to to submit an art packet, I would definitely do some more research with Anderson windows, which is a quality window in eliminating in eliminating those muttons. You know, and if the concern is, you know, what the type of muttons are, and, you know, I can get the answers for you, and, you know, maybe they're consistent with with what you're you're looking for. But what I'd like to steer away from from is, when you look at some of these windows, that that wooden one, that darker one, that that thing is gonna take anywhere from three to six months to produce it. So the likelihood of me purchasing that that highest grade one at fifteen bucks, fifteen hundred dollars is unlikely due to the time for manufacturing. I'd be more likely to purchase that that, you know, tanish, whatever color that is, I'm partially colorblind, the 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 one that has the the bridges on the top. They they one one hundred serial awning, one hundred series awning window, that would probably be the the most likely window that I'd be interested in. That's all I have for comment.
Is this something the board wants to have approved administratively as well? Mister Taylor? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, when I attempt to make a motion that we in approve application number twenty-one dash seventy-three subject to final design approval, administrative approval by city planner.
I'll second that. Any ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes.
Aye.
Any? Motion passes. Thank you, John Paul, was a great presentation. Okay, agenda item number seven. Application twenty-one seventy-four, Bisbee Residential Historic District, property located at fifteen Wood Canyon. Applicant Yancey Garner, Representative Brian Hope CPI. This application is seeking approval for new construction of guest house two stories approximately seventeen hundred square feet. The proposed building is physically connected to the main residence by means of a breezeway. Seventeen hundred square foot footprint is less than two thousand square foot of the main residence and does not contain clean independent living facilities. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code article three point five point two point A, the property owner is required to obtain approval from DRB prior to any new construction. The three hundred foot notification met on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Public comments at the time of this meeting are two public comments that were opposed. Public hearing, application presentation. Applicant representative will represent will present the application to the board. Mister Hope or Mister Garner?
Good evening, everybody, this is Brian Hope speaking. As the proposal states, we're seeking approval for the new construction of an auxiliary building on the Garner's property. Building measures approximately thirty by thirty-seven feet, it's two stories, twenty-three feet height in total. Primary purpose of the building will be for the garaging of the family's vehicles. Secondary purpose of the building will be for to provide family lodging when when folks come to visit the people. We've done it in a traditional style, and the main thing that drove this design was the surrounding trees. If you would look at, let's see what page is this, A zero dot three D, the perspective drawings. If you see the illustration with the trees there, that tall tree in the front is what this whole design hinged around. So we were looking to build something that would fit into that visual scape. The windows are all vinyl double hung with Victorian type trim. Doors are all full light. The the garage doors, we're going for a carriage house style rather than a traditional suburban divided door. Siding is horizontal cementaceous, and the roof material is heavy gauge R panel. And the roof material is a heavy gauge R panel. Deep porches wrap around the entirety of the structure. Oh, in the rear of the building, we do have two awning style buildings and not publicly viewable, and those are there. Uh, for ventilation only. Uh, at this time, that's all I have. If Julie and Yancy are here, I'll turn this over to them if if they'd like to speak on this.
Hi, this is Yancy Garner. I appreciate the board's time. I'll be quite brief. Mr. Hope has really outlined, I think, in good detail. Exactly what we're trying to accomplish here. One of the tertiary benefits of placing the garage structure on the property. Is we're able to relieve some of the traffic congestion on Wood Canyon and remove our vehicles from the street. And place them on our property. Uh, one of the chief design criteria also was. That of screening. We really wanted to build something so that when someone drove by. They would essentially not notice the building. We did want to camouflage it as much as possible. Uh, and give it the appearance of being. There for a number of years and something that's not a new construction. So I thank the board for its time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Thank you, Mr. Hope. At this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing open and receive public comments. Anyone who wants to speak? Or I guess approvals or yays? On this one can speak up now, and then we will do the opposed one. So anyone in favor? Okay, anyone opposed that would like to speak? Okay, uh, then what I'd like to do next, I'll close the public hearing. For public comments and. I'm gonna go ahead and read the recommendation from the city of Bisbee planner. Proportion massing and details are in keeping with other residential buildings in this Bisbee Historic District. Post cladding roofing and fenestration materials are in keeping with those previously approved. In the Bisbee Historic District by the Design Review Board. Recommendation? This office recommends approval of the application. Now I'll go ahead and open it for discussion amongst the board members. Any comments?
Just a just a question. Let's see, is this the third such structure? So there were two houses before that were approved. This is a third, right? This isn't redoing one of them or changing one of them, right?
Actually. It would not be the third structure, and the reason it would not be the third structure, it's not a redo. But I have sold the piece of property that was previously approved to other structures. I don't know what the new owner has in mind. Uh, so I am originally had sixty-five thousand square feet, fifteen thousand has been spun off. So this would represent one additional structure on fifty thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you. And I wasn't, that wasn't a qualifying question. I was just. Wondering if something was changed. But okay, thanks. Does hand is up.
Mr. Ward?
I'd like to, I'd like to tell you, say Ben, that. I do believe that this is an addition, not an addition, not an additional structure by itself.
I had a hard time hearing that. Can you repeat that, Mr. Ward?
This is, this, the proposed structure that that we're dealing with tonight is attached to the home. So it's an addition, not an additional structure on the property.
Oh, okay.
If I may, there is a breezeway connecting the two structures.
What's that breezeway look like? Is there, is it in the?
I apologize, it is not on here. It's a four by four post, or I'm sorry, four by six wooden posts. With the same metal style roofing, gable style roofing, connecting the residents to the the carriage house. I apologize for that omission.
Brian? Can I ask you a quick question? Are we not seeing it on A four? Elevation three, I believe. Are we not seeing a portion of it there?
It is there.
Yep, you're seeing a portion. Yeah, you're you're seeing the portion that attaches to the building in question, of course. That continues on approximately fifteen feet over to the main residence at an angle. But dead on from that side, that's pretty much what you would be seeing.
And the angle, the connection is shown on the site plan.
On the side plan, yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay. Uh, yes, oh, you wanna make the motion, Ben Lovely?
Oh, were there any emails that came in or letters?
Yes, there was two of them, and they were opposed. Sorry, Nina, I think maybe you were supposed to answer that. Although that's okay, yeah, two, two came in.
Uh, I was only aware of one letter of opposition. When did the second letter come in?
It basically stated the same thing as the first. That's why I didn't send it to you.
I see, okay.
Okay.
This is, this is Jancy Garner, and in all fairness, I think the board really should be aware of the contents of the opposition. Uh, I know it's it's probably not to my benefit, but just being above board, I I really think. A reading of that, if it's not been published. We should really let the board members know that.
Nina, did you wanna read those, or do you want me to?
I can read that.
Okay.
It's to the Design Review Board regarding new construction of a two-story building on Upper Fifteen Wood Canyon. The hills of Wood Canyon are historic. We have tours coming through there to show the sites and talk about them. The new owner, Yancy Garner, wants to build new houses up there and sell them. We strongly object to a new construction of a two-story building bordering Lachlan Avenue. He calls it a guest house now. Now, he already put a sign there that says for sale by owner with the phone number. The additional strain of on utilities, car parking, traffic and noise invades the neighborhood and interferes with the peaceful surroundings. Wildlife, people and the people who live there. And the second comment was just about the same as they were not in favor, and they feel that it's invasive.
Yes, Mr. Lovely?
I architecturally speaking, you know, I don't. I don't. Don't have too many issues with this. I think it is in keeping architecturally speaking. Uh, as far as utilities and that sort of thing. Um, I just. Bisbee was a very dense city to begin with. And its tax base was built on that density and. Every, every sewer fee, every property tax that the city please we can get, I think should be promoted. Uh, so we can go back to the density that we had in the nineteen thirty. So this, on that note, you know, I would. Be favorable to this application. The breezeway does give me a little bit of of worry. That that could have this be classified as a single structure. Uh, to me, that's not really the board's decision on that. I think ours is more about the architecture, so. But. It is, it it, that sort of thing does happen, and it's common in other areas.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, we couldn't hear you. Nina, is it me or is it him?
Frozen, I'm not sure.
I thought it was me.
Yeah, no, because everybody else is moving, so I think he's.
There you go, Mr. Davis, you're muted, and we couldn't hear what you said.
I I have no comment. I was just, I think it's time to make a motion.
Okay, who wants to make a motion, Mr. Lovely, since you spoke on that?
All right, I'd make a a motion to approve. Agenda item. Number is it, sorry?
Twenty-one seventy-four.
Fifteen Wood Canyon as as proposed.
I'll second it.
On favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Passes, the motion passes.
Ms. Linda, if you can go back to item number two now, and let's just table that. Call for it one more time, and then if nobody responds, we'll table that till this October sixth meeting.
October sixth, okay. Agenda item number two, application twenty-one sixty. Bisbee Commercial Historic District located at twenty-nine Main Street. Applicant Rachel Brand, Representative Rachel Brand and Jennifer Bean Blanc. This application is seeking approval of a sign for Jen's Angel. Pursuant to Bisbee zoning code article seven point five, the property owner is requested to obtain approval from the DRB. Prior to obtaining the sign permit for installation of commercial signage. Application applicant representative will present their application to the board. Is either Jennifer or Rachel available? And I'm gonna make a motion to table this until the October sixth meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll table this one.
All in favor?
All favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, any nays? Okay, motion passes. Okay, agenda item number eight, approval of the minutes of the August fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Is somebody making a a motion for that? Okay, I'll do it. Motion to approve the minutes of the August fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Is it second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaffer. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, my computer cut out. Who motioned and seconded? I'm so sorry.
Linda, then Peter.
Thank you. And a pass.
I apologize, thank you.
Okay, agenda item number nine, review discussion possible recommendation of mayor and council on preferred appointment to the Design Review Board. So we, what we have in front of us is we have an available position, a vacant position. And we received two applications, one from Lori Gannell and one from John Scott. What I'd like to do on this one is I'm gonna go ahead and and start it and give my recommendation. And I'll pass it along on the roll call, and if you wanna make a comment, you can make a comment. If you want to pass, that's fine. Then we'll vote, and that will be our recommendation.
I do have, I have, hold on, John. I do have John on speakerphone. In case you had any questions, and and John, it does for this, because Yvette's resignation. Isn't, it's effective now, but she won't officially resign until the October fifth meeting of mayor and council. So there technically is only one seat open at this point, so they do have to recommend someone for that seat.
Okay, I'll move forward on this one. Uh, my recommendation for the DRB application is for Lori Gannell. I have three items on that. First one, it's impressive and diverse civic volunteer experience, experience and resume. Um, the second point is all of her postgraduate work was done in historic preservation. An extensive home and public buildings. She actually toured a lot of these. She surveyed them for historic preservation. See, she has no conflict of interest, makes her the top contender for the new DRB position. In my opinion. And now I'm gonna pass it along to Peter Gaffer.
I'm sorry, I have no further comment.
Okay, thank you. Stephen Green?
Um, my only comment is I think these appointments are something that the mayor and council. Should be doing because if the Design Review Board is involved in. Um, voting for any particular applicants, we must remember. That we're all nom- nominated and put in our positions. And we're not publicly elected, whereas the council is. And I think the mayor and council have traditionally. Um, placed people in positions on the Design Review Board. They certainly did in my case. And this is the first time I've known since I've been here, and I'm in my third term. That we've been asked to vote on an application to be on the board. So I will abstain on any vote if we do um, do a vote on this because of that reason. I think it's not democratic.
Thank you, muted.
This is not a vote by the board. This is just asking for a recommendation from the board. The council and the mayor will do the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Scott Perfect?
I have no further comments. Thank you.
Ben Lovely?
I second Mr. Green's sentiment and therefore. I think it should be handled just the same as any other one. Before I, I'm not gonna make a recommendation.
Who am I missing?
That's everybody.
Okay.
Or maybe I'll say both applicants are strong in their own ways. But. Not gonna make a recommendation.
Nina, you can forward my recommendation if you please. Thank you. This concludes item number eight. Item number nine. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, instead of doing that, Mr. Green, this was one of your items, and since it's it's already seven eighteen. Can we just make an appointment to meet with Mr. Taylor and discuss what kind of changes that you want? They didn't make any recommendations.
Well, no, no, that one lady just said to just go with her recommendation.
That's not what she said. She said that she, as Linda Santanlis. Is going to make that recommendation. No other person was making that recommendation.
All right, so I'd like to agree with all the members of the board that. There shouldn't be recommendations made for the Designer Review Board to stack the. So they choose their own. Uh, people to be on the board, because that's not of democracy, and I'll just leave it at that.
All right, thank you, John.
All right, thanks. You guys have a good night.
Sorry about that. I didn't think you wanted to speak. Um, but for item number ten, I was just gonna see if I was gonna call. Mr. Green and see if he wanted to get in, have a meeting with Mr. Taylor so that we can discuss what changes he would like to see, and then that way we can bring that to the board. So if we can just table this until I can get further information, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, that's that's fine by me. I think that's a good idea, Nina.
Okay, thank you. Do we have to vote on tabling this or are we good?
No, if you can vote on it, that'll be perfect.
Okay, I'll make the motion to review and discuss and update the checklist for the minimum requirements for Design Review Board application submittals to to go to Mr. Green to discuss with Mr. Taylor another day. You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Motion pass. There's three and there's five of us. So motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the staff comments on July 7th, 2021, DRV application 2154 517 A Mayor Avenue was tabled for 30 days or until such time that the applicant can present the documentation as discussed during the hearing. Mr. Hope asked that this be postponed for another month or two. Okay, that's just general information, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll move on to the future item suggestions. I have one. I would like the board to discuss the extent of approvals that are are given to the city of Bisbee Planner, Taylor. I think in the future, I think that there's a lot of items that come through to us that could be administratively passed. And what I would like to do is for everybody to kind of think about that, including you, Joe, because you have the most experience as to some things that hang up people. Obviously, anything that is that has to do with infrastructure, any sewer lines, any leaks, anything that impacts residents immediately. I believe should go to the city planner, but that's a discussion to have at the next board meeting.
And I have to, oh, go ahead, Ms. Linda. I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
I was just gonna say, do I have to say anything else to that? We don't have to do a motion or anything, just put it on the agenda?
This is just, there's no discussion. It's just telling items, not at the October meeting, but at the November future meeting. I will be putting back on the agenda to meet in person or to stay on Zoom, just for your reference.
Okay, does anybody else have any future agenda or suggestions that they would like to discuss in November? Okay, I think that concludes our meeting. So if I can have somebody, and we do one last one to do motion to in the meeting?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I think this concludes our meeting.
Thank you.